Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order, Long Branch City Council. Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Here.
Mr. Viera will be absent this evening. Dr. Vogt?
Here.
Dr. Selly? Dr. Selly?
Here.
Mrs. Wittes?
Here. Please all stand for the Pledge Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the first place. Thank you.
I hereby certify that this meeting has been published in the newspaper in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act and posted as required by law.
Thank you. Presentations, there is none. Reading and approval of previous minutes, I need a motion to approve the minutes of July 11, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Consideration of ordinances, public hearing and final consideration, there are none. Ordinances for introductions. This is the first reading of ordinance number 13-18 entitled an ordinance amending ordinance 325-3K on the schedule XB 111, 32544, Handicap Park in Grand Avenue. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to the law and set the public hearing for August 8, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance number 14-18 entitled an ordinance granting a five-year tax exemption to Sharon E. Hockman for a development project of property located at 91 Ocean Terrace designated as Block 302, Lot 2. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for August 8, 2018.
So moved.
Second. Roll call. Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance number 15-18 entitled an ordinance authorizing right-of-way to be vacated Seaview Avenue, Area A, situated in the city of Long Branch, Monmouth County, New Jersey. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for August 8, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance number 16-18 entitled an ordinance authorizing right-of-way to be vacated Seaview Avenue, Area B, situated in the city of Long Branch, Monmouth County, New Jersey. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for August 8, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance number 17-18 entitled an ordinance authorizing dedication of property to establish a proposed highway, Seaview Avenue, Area C, situated in the city of Long Branch, Monmouth County, New Jersey. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for August 8, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. This is the first reading of ordinance number 18-18 entitled an ordinance providing for the licensing of reward programs for the payment of taxes by a Long Branch program. I need a motion to introduce on first reading, advertise and post according to law and set the public hearing for August 8, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Dr. Vogt?
Yes.
Dr. Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. At this time, I need a motion to open the public portion of the meeting for all comments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? If anyone in the audience has any comments to make, please step to the microphone and state your name and address clearly for the record. You will have five minutes and may only speak once.
Good evening. Lilian Grauman, 396 Second Avenue in Long Branch. Quick question. Governor Murphy just, I think, passed something with the funding for the school systems. They're going to redistribute some of the monies. Will that affect Long Branch?
I don't know the answer.
Okay.
I know that it was the first step. They added $138 million to the state budget for the purpose of funding districts that were traditionally underfunded.
Right.
We could certainly find out and get the answer for the next meeting.
Okay, great.
Lilian, I'm sorry. Are you talking about the $2 million that was added to the school budget? Is that what we're talking about?
No, no. I'm talking about their, I think they are going to redistribute some of the funding from, from...
So there's a, there's a, there's a state aid formula law that's, that's been in effect for many years.
Right.
And about 10 years ago, what happened was that the state, there were municipalities such as Jersey City, and everybody talks about Jersey City, that they were, they were grandfathered in, so they continued to get funding even though they had an increase in ratables and in a manner that would have required them to get less funding.
Right.
So the state has now started to move towards fully funding the formula, and what they're doing is reducing people like Jersey City, who has, you know, 15,000 new housing units and can afford to fund their school system and to give it to districts that are traditionally underfunded. What I don't know is where Long Branch is on that continuum.
Right.
But we can find, we can find out the answer. I think they put, I think they actually published...
So Lilian, yes, it was $2 million. Actually, I spoke with Mr. Genovese, who's a business administrator for the, for the board the other day. My understanding is that that money was, and Rose or Bill, that money was already put in place in March, so I, it's, it's, it was a little deceiving in the sense that it was reported that it would look like it's an additional $2 million that was put in the budget, but I think, and Bill or Rose, you could say that it was already there. So Mike, you tell me, the increase, I think they're not changing their rate.
Okay.
Right.
That was the question. Thank you so much. And I'd like to thank Mayor, President, council members, Jason, the Long Branch Police Department for putting a speed monitor on Overlook Avenue. It's, it's helped a lot and appreciate that. Also signage. Now, we all know that in the city, if it's a city and if it's not posted, the speed limit is 25 miles an hour, but there are some streets, and I'm not saying, listen, you just got elected. I don't think anyone is expecting things to be done overnight, you know? Things take time. But if we could delineate a little bit, put speed limit signs, again, down Second, I think there's one speed limit sign from Brighton Avenue down to Chelsea Avenue. And there's some other streets I'm sure that you're going to be hearing about. I think I saw it posted on Facebook that some people are going to start writing to you or calling about that. And that's it. Again, I just want to thank, thank everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Marsha Brown. I live at 111 Joe Line Avenue, and I've been a resident of Long Branch since 1999. Congratulations on your victory. And I wanted to ask a few questions, try not to spend too long, but would like to hear from you all. So in terms of the ordinances and how, and the culture of dealing with ordinances, typically there's not an explanation about why there's a benefit to the city council approving an ordinance. And I'm just wondering if you would consider adding a statement or two saying why an tax exemption or, you know, some other kind of action that really is impactful, at least perceived to be impactful, might not be accompanied by a statement of why this benefits the citizens of Long Branch. Secondly, as a...
Could you use the microphone just to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
You just, yeah.
Yeah. Did you hear that last thing? Okay, great. Secondly, I wonder if you can give us over time, because you came in as a team, so this suggests that you guys are conferring and consulting with one another and figuring out what's the best way to present your vision to the citizens of Long Branch. Could you, over time, present to this body of citizens your top five priorities and what you see dealing with over the next four years? And then thirdly, because I live on Joe Line, I see all the traffic that goes into the beach, and I'm just wondering what your routing plan is, because it's just getting more and more steep and deeper, and there has to be some kind of a plan to reroute traffic. And I'm just wondering what kind of thought you've given to that. Fourthly, I've also noticed increased homelessness in the city, or at least people who appear to be homeless. I'm wondering if you've given some thought to that. And also unemployment. What is the nature of unemployment in Long Branch? Is there an opportunity now that we have investors and developers and other businesses who want to invest in Long Branch? Is there an opportunity to create agreements where people who maybe have been chronically unemployed but are employable to be employed through workforce development agreements? And then lastly, I wish you luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm sorry. Request one-minute notification. Vincent Lepore, 33, Ocean Terrace, Long Branch. We're going from the public record to the public record. During Team Pallone's campaign, mailers and flyers went out, most notably three of them. The first concerning the infamous Tale of Two Cities flyer comparing the forgotten Long Branch versing Schneider's Pure Village. And I'm going to quote, "22 million dollars in tax breaks for Pure Village and South Beach." Let the record reflect, two noted members of Team Pallone, then Councilman Pallone and Councilwoman Selly voted for that financial package for Pure Village, which included the 30-year tax abatement. The second flyer, paid for by the Pallone team, entitled John Pallone for Mayor, It's Time to Put Long Branch First: Better Deals for Long Branch. And I'll quote the flyer, mailer. Mayor Schneider negotiated developer deals that enriched billionaire investors and gave tax breaks to part-time residents. We will negotiate deals that put Long Branch first." End quote. Again, for the record, then Councilman Pallone and Selly voted for that package. And finally, mailer number three, by Stronger Foundations, affiliated with the Operating Engineers Union, of whom Greg LaLavive now serves as co-chairman of Mayor Pallone's transition team, co-chairman for economic development and labor workforce. That Stronger Foundation mailer stated, quote, "The same old story, sweetheart deals for special interests. He's helped huge developers like Donald Trump's, he being Schneider. He helped huge developers like Donald Trump's son-in-law Jared Kushner get filthy rich through taxpayer-funded sweetheart deals." End quote. Again, then Councilman Pallone and Councilwoman Selly both voted for this sweetheart deal, noting the glaring inconsistency in the public record. Team Pallone, council, you will have an opportunity this evening to set the record straight as you campaigned for. I am requesting each council person to answer the following question, yes or no, consistent with your campaign literature and public comments during the campaign. The question, will you withdraw the financial package, which included the 30-year tax abatement, from convicted felon developer Charles Kushner and Jared Kushner's Pure Village Phase 3? Please answer the question, yes or no. Councilwoman Vogt?
Perhaps maybe I can answer the question.
I'm asking the council, the running on Team Pallone's record.
No, I understand that. Mr. Lepore, I just wanted to put it in some context. Assuming that it was approved by ordinance, it's a signed agreement, the council doesn't necessarily have the authority to just simply withdraw it because this new council decides they want to do that. It's a binding agreement.
Counsel?
I just wanted to put, I just wanted to put it in context. And I'm not, didn't mean to be argumentative, but I just wanted to make sure we understood. You're asking the council to say whether they'll do something they probably don't have the legal right to do.
But they campaigned on it. But they campaigned on it.
I, I think what you read...
They do have the right to rescind the ordinance. I've been here many times since 2003.
Not, not when there's a binding agreement, sir. So the point of it is, I think what you read was a statement of, in the future, that the team won't enter into those kind of agreements, and I think that that's probably the council's position, but they don't really have the ability, if there are granted tax abatements and signed developers' agreements, to simply just rescind them and breach those contracts.
That's incorrect. Nowhere in the literature of the campaign did they say future agreements.
33 seconds.
Pardon?
You have 43 seconds left.
So you're telling me this council campaigned on the financial package and how wrong it is, and now they're not going to rescind it for Pure Village Phase 3? Is that what you're saying? The financial package for Pure Village Phase 3 will not be rescinded?
I, I think the answer is cannot be rescinded.
No, that's incorrect answer. For the public purpose, where was their campaign when they campaigned for it? Where were the experts then to tell them then they couldn't campaign on it? They won an election on a financial package of tax abatements for Pure Village Phase 3.
Mr. Lepore?
And now you're saying they're not withdrawing it? Junk government continues.
I, I'm really interested in about, in the Buy Long Branch program, and I think for the citizens of Long Branch, it's a, it's a no-lose situation for the citizens. My concern more is law of unintended consequences. The funding, as I understand it, as I heard in the first workshop, watched the video, and as I understand it through reading the ordinance, is funded through the companies, the businesses, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So my concern is more with the small businesses being able to survive, that based on what I heard, I believe it's like an average of restaurants will give like 10% or something like that to it, seven and a...
It's up to them, Adam.
Yeah, it's up to them.
It's usually typically 7% to 12% from what we're told.
Okay, so, yeah, about that. So I know small businesses, restaurants, for instance, I have friends in it, and actually, an example is Be Goats in West End. It closed after two years. Great, it was great Mexican, homemade Mexican food, but I know there's just the family running it. And one of the other questions, the, I think the guarantee each company is supposed is 25,000?
No, that's, that's not by each of the individual businesses. That's, that's the company who's going to run the program.
Other company's going to run, okay.
So, so they post a, they post a guarantee, so we make sure that they collect that money and that money actually gets to the...
Gets to us.
That's right.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
The, my concern though is obviously someone like Be Goats opening in West End, that's already has trouble maintaining those restaurants. A lot of restaurants turnover over there and, or other areas. A small restaurant having to now, if something like, say, Valentina's, another Mexican restaurant gives the 10%, and then you have this restaurant that can't give it because they can't afford to give it. They're barely making ends meet. My only concern is, have you gotten comments yet from the Chamber of Commerce?
Have what, Adam?
The, have you gotten comments yet, opinions about ways to tweak the agreement or...
They have not yet, but I have discussed it with them.
Okay. Will you have that? I mean, I'm, especially with government, working in government, I definitely understand getting this moving and the ordinances moving forward. And again, I'll be the first person to get one of these cards regardless, because obviously I shop in Long Branch work, and I definitely eat in Long Branch with my wife. We go to a lot of the restaurants. But I think it would be beneficial before it gets implemented to possibly get the comments from the chamber and to actually implement possible changes that they have, concerns that they have, before it actually gets implemented. Do you think that...
I mean, that's, the company that manages the program, that's actually, in fact, their suggestion. But yes, I have mentioned it to the chamber. We do plan on having further conversations with them and others as well.
Is there any way to protect those, like those type of scenarios with the small businesses that, you know, at that point, it's going to be even harder for them to compete with the big ones that can afford to do, give the discounts?
Well, so, understand the theory. The theory is, is to encourage people in Long Branch to spend money, spend their money in Long Branch.
In Long Branch.
So it's, it's just a vehicle for a, for a business that's in town actually to, you know, you know, to have half-priced drinks on Monday. It's just another promotion.
Right.
Really, that, that's effectively what it is. So it's a voluntary program. You don't, you don't have to, you don't have to be in it, but the answer in the marketplace, right, is that if your competitor is offering discounts...
Right.
You have to offer discounts or, I mean, that's, it's really, the marketplace kind of sorts those things out, but the point of it is, is to try to get people to not go to, not, not anything to our friends in Eaton Town, but not to go to Eaton Town and come to stay longer.
I perfectly understand that. I'm just worried that the city is going to implement this program and encourage, which, again, I'm going to shop, I'm going to be the first person to get the card, but that other businesses now, when they try to open up, are either going to be forced into doing this because, to compete, because already it's, it's going to be there, and it's going to be a struggle for some of those businesses that are family-owned, that are just like that. That's why I was just wondering if there's any consideration to how that type of situation can be, you know, not necessarily mitigated or avoided, not necessarily...
And if I could just answer one last part of this question. I, there's, I think there's about 28 or 29 of these programs operating already.
Right.
I don't, I don't know that that's been an experience, but it's a good question to maybe ask some of those towns to see whether they've had that experience or not.
Okay. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Lori Ann Vinetti, 33, Ocean, 33 and 38 Ocean Terraces. I don't know her name, but you had a great idea about, I read, I read the ordinances today for the introduction or for public hearing on the 8th, and I thought they were today, but in reading the three ordinances for Seaview Avenue, I was kind, I'm still confused, and I read all three of them over and over. So a little synopsis, I don't know if that can be done by law or not, but a little synopsis of, of why something's done, and I thought that was a great idea, so I second that motion. And the other thing is, now that we have the video stream of the council meetings, which is great, the purpose, I believe, was for other people that can't come, or elderly that can't come, to watch the, to watch the city council meetings. But for them to participate, it would be, it would be a good idea if, if they could call in or email and question, maybe limited to like 10 people or five people or whatever, but it might be, you know, for people watching, there's, there's no way to participate in the, in the meeting other than watching it. And if they have a question, if you have senior citizens watching it, they're not going to be able to ask, ask that question. So it's just, I don't know if that's technically can be done, you know, phone call or, or email or a text message or something, but it might be something to get the public more involved. It might not, but it might be, you know, just another idea to get the public participating more in, in the meetings. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rick Garlop, 43, Slogan Place in Long Branch. I just wanted to follow up a little bit on Adam's concerns with Shop Long Branch. I just had a couple of questions. The first would be, this is not, it doesn't affect anything with tax, so it wouldn't necessarily impact any UEZ zones or anything like that?
No.
Okay. And the, this particular ordinance is not specific to the company that came to do a proposal?
Correct.
It's just saying the city can do this?
It's just saying that somebody can, that, that company, for instance, if they want, they can apply for a permit to do this.
Okay. Would that then come before...
Nope.
The council, so it could be, so by, by voting yes on this ordinance, it's saying that then the details of what goes on aren't necessarily going to be part of the public record or not?
Well, they are, because they'll be part of, there'll be literally an application and a program description for the Shop Long Branch, and if it, I guess you could put it online, but it'll be there, so anybody who wants to get a permit to do it, all of the details will be right there. It'll be same for everybody.
Okay. But it wouldn't be anything that's, again, it would be dealt with within the...
Correct.
Administration, would not be brought up at the council.
Correct.
All right. So then I would just express some concern on the percentage that the proposed company, you know, I, I wasn't aware that the 10% was actually coming from the, the business, because I do think that's going to be, you know, I, I understand, again, that the idea of it being a promotion, but the 10% on top of the $300 they're going to have to spend for the terminal and the $10 a month that they spend to be a part of this, I could just see that as being a little difficult for every business.
Rick, you know, it's, it's, it's not 10%. The average is 7% to 12%, and it's determined by the business owner, A, whether they want to participate, and B, what percentage or discount they want to offer.
Okay.
So it could be 5% or 3, you know, whatever they decide to do.
Okay. And then from that, the proposal from Finn Credit, correct, was that 25% of whatever that percentage is, is going to go to them? And 75% would, okay.
Correct. So, so on a 10, let's say on a $10 discount, the, the resident would get a 750 reduction in their property tax, and the company would get 250 for maintaining and operating the service.
Right.
All of which, if you think about it, I mean, I see it as a win-win for, for everyone, but the bottom line is that no additional expense or staffing whatsoever to the city. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. That, that includes the assistance in getting the businesses to, to be a part of that? That's not going to deal with the city. That's going to be the, the vendor that goes out and gets everyone to agree?
Yes.
Okay.
No, but I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
But, but they certainly say that the program works best when you have a city employee, city employee who goes out and tries to promote that. But Lou, if you could point out also that whole branding aspect of that, which is...
Correct. So I, I think that what the towns who have done this have experienced is that it kind of gives a focal point for their economic development. So it gives, you know, there's, you know, people here in the city who are tasked with helping economic development for the, for the city. It now gives them an opportunity to go and have something to talk to businesses about, promotes a, a brand of Shop, Shop Long Branch. It gives, you know, gives everybody kind of a commonality to it. So it actually has be in, in the other places in the state that it's been, it actually has been, like I said, become the focal point of their economic development push.
Okay. Have there been other municipalities that are similar to Long Branch? I'm not familiar with...
Sure. The first one was Marlboro. Marlboro actually was the first one, and of course, the, off the top of my head, is By Brick, for instance, is a similar one. I think there are 28 of them, I believe.
I think it's like 25. I think Brick is the biggest. Ocean Township is, participates.
Okay.
And Marlboro was the, was the model for...
Yeah.
Okay. The only thing I would say is I would just, I think that 25% sounds a little steep. So I would just, I, I don't know if it's set at that 25% with this company. I would recommend that if the city had a choice to haggle a little, negotiate, that 25% of that, whatever percentage is, seems just a little high. That would be my, my comment. But thank you. I appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Hi. Good evening. Ernest Minoli. I'd say 301 Second Avenue, but I was born there and raised there, and now I live in Esberry Park. But I still have family here, and I'm very interested and concerned about what I consider my home city. Question I have is, is there a timer here or anywhere?
Yes, right here.
Where?
That's right, with the council president.
I have it. It's right here.
Oh, okay. Can you give me a one-minute warning, please?
I'm sorry?
A one-minute warning?
I will give you a one minute.
Thank you.
Sure.
Sure.
So, one of the questions I had for the city council is, for the city business administrator in Long Branch now, as per code and purview and requirement for that position, does it require a university or college degree?
I don't, no. No, it does not.
It does not?
Does not.
Didn't you advertise for a city business administrator, and say requirements were college degree?
It's not a statutory requirement, that was one of the qualifications I was asked for in the ad, yes, it was.
And, I'm not sure if there are that many municipalities, I know there's 565 in New Jersey that have a non-degreed city business administrator, perhaps we could find out, but I think it's probably less than...
How many do, how many do, there, there are some, but I, I don't know...
Which ones are they?
Excuse me?
Which ones?
Oh, I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, I'm, I'm sure there are some.
Based on what?
Based upon the fact that I've probably represented, I don't know, 120 municipalities in my career, and I know some of the business administrators, and those towns did not have college degrees.
Well, which ones?
What, I, once again, I'm sorry, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay. All right, the other thing is, in, at Holy Trinity Church, probably eight or 10 years ago, a club started on top of the, I don't know what it is, it's like a utility building there, it was called the Holy Smoke Cigar Club, and then Holy Trinity somehow merged with Star of the Sea, and apparently that group was kind of asked to vacate, and they kind of vacated over to my church, where I still go, where I was baptized, confirmed, and, and I still go, which is Star of the Sea. So now, this is on, operating in the second floor of the convent, where I used to sweep the porch for the nuns, that's where they lived, and you had the church, the rectory attached, a little grassy field, and then a convent building, and the first floor is usually, I think it was condemned, and the lower level is used for some kind of charity clothing drop, and then, of course, for eight years, the Holy Smoke Cigar Club has occupied the top. You know, it's got a lot of different names and reputations, some people call it a cigar club, some people call it parties around the clock, some people call it a place for firemen and police to kind of let loose, and kick loose, and bring alcohol, and do other things, and, so, along the way, I filed opers, and I was always told that, it doesn't exist, it doesn't exist, until after the election, all of a sudden, I filed opers again, and now, all of a sudden, it exists, everything was backdated, so as of 5/31/18, after operating for almost eight years, now it exists, however, if you look at the documents, it doesn't look like it was done, I don't know, correctly, but that's something I'd like to talk to you about, or communicate with you about, if I can get your email. The other thing...
Ernie, the only thing I can tell you is, the first floor is definitely not condemned, because I'm a member of the Holy Name Society, and we meet there periodically.
You do?
Yeah, on the first floor.
On the first floor?
Yes.
So, how do you get in?
I'm assuming that the, someone opens the, the door.
You say you meet there?
I'm sorry?
You meet there?
Correct.
How do you get in?
You know, I've...
Here's the door.
I arrive.
I'm sorry, it's a little technical question.
No, 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 Ernie, in other words, I arrive. I haven't seen anybody...
Mayor, it's okay, maybe you'll, off the top of your head, maybe you'll remember, but what I will tell you is, what I will tell you is...
I haven't seen anybody open the door, so I don't know who has the key, but I have gone in.
The cigar club enters from a fire escape on the rear north side, and that's not lawful, so, maybe someone should look, oh, I'm sorry?
One minute.
What?
I have one minute.
Oh, I have one minute, thank you. Now, one other thing, one of the key people at that Holy Smoke Cigar Club is a fireman, I'm not sure of his position, his name is Siciliano Thomas III, he, I don't know if you noticed, but in the coaster, there was a thing about profanity and hate being posted around with bumper stickers, and here it is, I'll give you the article, it says hashtag F blank, 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 well, it says U C K on the sticker, and then it has my name, Minoli. Now, I received this from your fire marshal, and when I went to come to make a report to the police, they told me leave, so, do I have to leave, or can I report this, that he sent it to me? I have it? Tough question, right? So I asked three tough questions. A municipality with a non-degreed business administrator, how you get into the meetings, and now I'm asking how. He can send that in the mail with other comments about genitals, other things, and he's a city employee, so who do I report it to?
So, so, Ernie, I'm sorry, I can't answer any of your questions about, about the second floor, because I've never been up there, but I was just responding to your saying that you thought the first floor was condemned, in fact, like I said, the Holy Name Society meets in there, and we go right through the front door on the few steps that are up, you know, that lead into the building.
Chelsea Avenue, the chapel entrance?
No, 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 it's on the side entrance there, where the park, where the park...
It says Knights of Columbus on the door?
You know what, Ernie, I'm sorry, I just go into the building for the meetings, and usually it's...
Is that an open meeting, can I come to that?
Oh, I, I don't think anybody's going to stop you, you're also welcome to join the organization if you want to.
I'd like to, I'd really like to join that.
Please do.
This way we'll be very different from what goes on on the second floor.
I'm being serious, we're looking for members.
Trust me, Mayor, I'm being very serious, what am I going to join?
I'm sorry?
What am I joining?
Holy Name Society.
Holy, at Star of the Sea, Holy?
Well, it's not at the Star of the Sea, it's Christ the King Parish.
Right.
They meet, they meet at Holy Trinity one month, and then I think on alternating months, they meet at Star of the Sea.
And in that, in that building, and, and our purpose is, I guess, to raise money for the churches, or?
I'm sorry?
Our purpose is to raise money for the churches?
Purpose is to raise money for the church.
All right, good, so we're set for...
And to help with the, you know, with...
And how would I go about just confirming how to communicate concerns or complaints to the new city council, are you allowed to email?
Does the department have my email address?
No, I don't have anything, I'm just wondering, I went online, and I don't think you're up yet, but is that how you want to, let's say?
The answer is, I, I, my law firm has a website, it's, I'm in Woodbridge, but you can ask the clerk's office, they'll give you my email address, no problem.
Okay.
I'm sorry, your time is...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ernie.
Thank you.
Earl Cooper, 36 Rockwell Avenue. Good evening, Madam President, esteemed council, Mr. Mayor, and central administrators. The last time I was here, I had spoken to you all about the five-minute rule, quote-unquote. Let me first say I was very happy in the fact that a number of speakers came up here, and they was allotted much more than five minutes, and I was very pleased to see that. Again, as citizens, as people who elected you to represent them, I believe that the five-minute rule is a front on our First Amendment. Now, I realize that the, the last administrators, they had very little respect for the people in this community, and I think the people in this community had less for themselves to allow this, but in any case, I just want to say I'm very happy so far. I don't know if that five-minute rule is an amendment, or what, but I would love to come here on Wednesday evening and have you, Madam President, or Mr. Mayor, say we no longer have a five-minute rule, even with this cute little chirp behind me, I still believe it's a front on the First Amendment. When people in this community see the representatives twice a month, they should be able to have more than five minutes to speak on things that they feel concerns them in this community. But in any case, I was very pleased with you all, and I hope that continues. The second day, I heard this gentleman referring to positions and whether or not they needed diplomas, or whatever, I think people should, first and foremost, that work in Long Branch, live in Long Branch, I think that gives them a true opportunity of evaluating the citizens in this community. A civil engineer degree from Harvard don't mean anything to me as a person serving as a city administrator, if he knows the people. I know that positions change when administrations change, but I know a number of good men that work in this community, that work in this administration, and didn't necessarily share all the negations that went on in this community with the former administration. I guess there's about five of y'all up there that I've known for 20-plus years, I think you'll find people. I don't think you would ever put anybody to work in this community that didn't represent all the people. Again, I, I know people that works now, I don't know, I'm not going to mention their names, but I know they're good people, and I hope in the process of this current administration, when they start selecting people to hold down positions, that they understand that, and I think they will, again, like the last administration was very negative toward the people and the citizens in this community, but again, we allow that, and I will speak on this five-minute rule until one bright Wednesday evening, the current president will say, you know, we no longer have a five-minute speaking rule. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Mark and Roseanne Davis, 47, Slocum Place. And I work for the city of Long Branch. I work from April through October, I'm the manager of the community garden, and that community is for all of us, we're giving out food, we give out five pounds of food to anybody that walks in the gate off Seventh Avenue. The garden is between Seventh Avenue and Lippincott, it's the old railroad tracks. I would love to see everybody come and visit me, I'll be there tomorrow. What? What did you say, I'm sorry, what? Well, my hours are on the fence, it's open three days a week, that's all. But I'd like to thank Long Branch, and whoever had, and Jake Jones, who is my boss, for having a community garden, that's an incredibly enlightened thing to have, and we have other spaces, Liberty and Sayers that used to be gardens too, because this is the future, community gardens, food, giving food to people, we can all appreciate that, because we all eat food, and I want to see the council come there, Jake Jones says he's going to organize a little visit for the council to walk through, it's really beautiful right now, Andrea Abbott, a master gardener, has put in a pollinating garden in front. Yep, and she's put in a herb garden behind the schoolhouse, that's that building, I call the schoolhouse, and they're amazing, and I was looking at them the other day, I go, why aren't people looking at this, this is a piece of art, you know, this is a piece of art for all of us, nobody's there, except the 74 families that are there, from coastal communities, of nonprofit, second floor St. James Church, they handle all the individual gardeners there, I'm on the board of coastal communities, and so, I'm just asking, come and visit, and thank you, once again, for having such an incredible garden. Also, quickly, oh, we put rain barrels on the, the schoolhouse, so we're collecting water, hopefully someday, we can have a water source on Lippincott and Seventh Avenue, so we don't have to run a hose all the way from the schoolhouse to Lippincott, it'd be nice to have that in the future, I think. Anyway, what else? But everything else is great over there, except for the groundhogs, we're talking to them, and let's see, what else? Roseanne, am I missing anything? Oh, okay, we live on Slocum Place, you put in a new gravel driveway, I don't know if anybody's noticed it, but...
Through Slocum Park.
Through Slocum Park, I don't know what it's for, but it's, it's there, but it's gravel, and the gravel is held on the sides by these metal slabs, or pieces of metal, but they're jutting out on the new apron, and they're very dangerous. I keep putting little, but you're going to have that night out pretty soon, I would like look into those metal corners jutting out right on the cement, somebody's going to trip on those, you know, the kids are going to be there, anyway, that's just a heads up.
Yeah, one of them is covered, but the other is, is exposed, and at nighttime, someone's going to shred their ankle on it, because it's sharp metal sticking right out.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, that's, but anyway, I'd like to thank Jake Jones once again, for guiding us over the years, and as he told me when he hired me three years ago, he said, feed the people, and that's what we do, we feed the people of Long Branch, or whoever comes in, and it's a beautiful thing, and I thank you for supporting it, and I plan, and it really, for me, it's a life-changing job. I, I can't, I put more hours in there than I'm paid for, and I have a job like that, because I'm supposed to be there, I'm supposed to be helping people, and I do my best, it's like a piece of art to me, I am a visual artist, but a gardener too, it's all art, and please visit.
I have one minute.
I'm sorry?
I have one minute.
One minute? Okay, I'll give it to the ether, I'm done.
Thank you.
Got anything? That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I want to thank you for all that you do, even beyond the community gardens, thanks.
I'm Linda Swinby, and I live at 157 Seventh Avenue, apartment D106, Long Branch. I'm glad this young man said something about the community garden, because I don't think a lot of people know much about it, and I didn't know until just now that you could walk through. I did talk to the gentleman going down Lippincott, and I didn't know he was the, you know, had the position he did have, so, it's, I'd recommend the, getting the word out even more so than just here, but I have, I've, my, I, my concern is, or what I've observed, now, I don't know if this is a financial, or, I'm, where I'm coming from is, trying to save the city some money. I walk from, on Thursday nights, I walk home from the concert, say like 8:30, 9, well, 9 o'clock, baby, if I go directly home, I have sat on the benches that are there. Well, nothing wrong with that, they're good, strong benches, but what I see is they're weather-worn, they're gray, and they're kind of, where they're at, are kind of ugly-looking at them, you know, but I don't know if, how far up they go, down, I think it's Ocean Avenue, or is it Ocean Boulevard, one of the two, you know, from CVS up, or CVS down, I don't know how far they go, but they're good, strong benches, and, but if you could paint them, and I see maybe painting them white, and why white? This is what I think about, a why white? Well, when you're going down, and you see, and you're walking, even walking, but I think if people were driving, if they were painted white, along with the beautiful dark green grass, it would be an eye-catcher, you know, but I appreciate, and I don't know what the weather is like, you know, like with the humidity, if there's an outdoor paint that would survive the, the weather, like we're having, the humidity, the dampness, but I would, and there's nothing wrong with, I like the benches that you put in at, over here at Slocum Park, that, you know, if those benches could be put in there, and where I'm coming from is maybe trying to save the city some money by painting what's there, because they're good, strong benches, they're just weather-worn and gray-looking, and it could be just a beautification if they could be painted, or if you could check into it, I'd much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mantley, 91 North Fifth Avenue. I wanted to know what the North Fifth Avenue discussion was done at 6 o'clock, and I'd like to know when do you think you're going to have the completion, by the railroad tracks finish, since it's been a summer project so far.
Yeah, I think she wanted an update of what happened at 6 o'clock.
Yes, Ms. Mantley, the engineer appeared, and obviously, I left several messages, you've contacted me, and I've called you back and left you several messages, you know, we're, we're as upset about it as you are. The engineer believes that the construction, construction schedule now would be that by the end of next week, we should have the road open and accessible, it's all weather-related, but we, he feels that we're on a good path to move forward now.
So is that meaning I can get in my driveway next week?
We are hoping that, that is absolutely the case, yes, that's our, our goal, to get that to happen, absolutely.
Okay. I hope so.
I do too.
I hope we don't... I hope we don't have a fall, you know, project too.
Understood.
Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Dennis Sherman, I live at five-ten Ocean Avenue, I represent the Save Ocean Avenue Committee of Long Branch, and the Long Branch Coalition of Condominiums, and hundreds of walkers that use the boardwalk, and this is the third, around the third week of your new administration. I have been coming here for the last ten years. People who have complained about the boardwalk, all the ills of the safety crossing Ocean Avenue and Ocean Boulevard have been ignored. We've had contentious uh meetings, uh, the last council and mayor turned their backs, and yet, within three weeks, this mayor and this council have put together a one-hundred day plan, and within that plan, they have already succeeded in creating a shade park with benches, gardens in boxes, and today, the city, through the Public Works Department, and through the traffic part of the Police Department, have made the whole roadway of Ocean Avenue and some of Ocean Boulevard much safer to cross. So, I'm really here to invite you, because I know all of you are so busy, and many of you don't know about this, go down to Brighton Avenue, see the shade park, see the benches, see the umbrellas, see the new bike path signs that the police have put up to try to make it safer for bikes to get up West End Avenue. Look at the new stanchions that make traffic go the right way, see the family, children safety signs, and also look out on Ocean Boulevard. There are not enough signs out there, but if you look at the one-hundred day plan, this mayor and council have put in that plan to address all those issues. But the most heartwarming thing to us, and this was on the bathrooms of the old boardwalk, if you happen to walk on the old boardwalk, there were these beautiful four-by-eight paintings, boards, that were put up on the sides of the bathrooms that depicted the history of Long Branch, the old pier, people in bathing suits from the eighteen and nineteen hundreds, the art, uh, famous artist who showed people of that century looking down the bluffs. And I don't know if everybody knows, but Long Branch is the only place along the shore that has two green acre linear parks for open space dedicated to the people of Long Branch, for them to use in their leisure time and enjoy. And this is the first administration that was able to close that road to traffic, to keep cars off that road, and to make it a park for the people. So I hope everybody gets some time to see what a top-flight, honest, hard-working mayor and council can do within three weeks. And look at that hundred-day plan on the website, because as we move from three weeks, I'm sure you're going to see a lot of other improvements, all up and down the road and Broadway, for everybody of Long Branch. So, thank you all, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anna, um, I'd like to refrain from saying my address, but I live in Long Branch.
I wanted to address a few things that I thought was pretty annoying and disturbing at the last planning board meeting, and something that I've been taking notice over the past six years, taking a walk around the community, is the subdividing of lots, I think it's a much overlooked um facet of overdevelopment, and I think it contributes more to the lack of parking in areas like Lippincott, Sixth and those streets in that area, um, as well as multifamilies. I wanted to know if um, you could explain if it's legal to stop that, and how it would go, how we would go about that?
Well, it's not legal to stop people from subdividing their property, the, the way you manage that from a zoning point of view is you set lot sizes. So, if you have, if you set lot sizes that are fifty by a hundred, and somebody has a piece of property that's a hundred by a hundred, they're gonna be able to divide it into two, two lots, because that's, that's a legal-sized lot. So, you also can't stop people from asking for zoning variances, it's a, it's, you know, it's part of the zoning law. So, you can't strictly outlaw subdivisions, but you control the density in an area by controlling lot sizes.
And how about multifamilies, is that possible that you could reduce the amount of homes that are converted into multifamily?
Once again, it's, it's also part of the zoning, because in order for it to be permitted in the zone, you'd have to permit multifamily in that zone, and it would only be granted if, if there's a hardship variance, which is, would be unusual. So, once again, it's a, it's all a function of how your zoning ordinance is established.
And since it's up to the zoning board, would you, would any of the council members personally guarantee that we would appoint someone that was looking out for over, overdevelopment?
Well, you can't, so I'm, I apologize for answering these questions, they're really kind of legal questions. The zoning boards are effectively judges, so the, the zoning board's obligation is to apply the zoning law. So, you, you can't precondition somebody's appointment to a board by saying, will you promise that you won't grant applications? The answer is, if the applications legally need to be granted, they, if they meet the legal standard, they have to be granted.
And how would they go about changing the lot sizes, or um, what's permitted, and how quickly could they do that?
It's part, part, so it starts with the master plan, right? There's a, there's a master plan uh for the town that's established by the planning board, it's required by law to be reviewed, I would think, every six years.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's where it starts, and then the master plan makes recommendations to amendments to the zoning law, and then those recommendations come to the council, the council then, then would vote on them, that's, but that's where it starts, it starts at the master plan.
Okay, and this is a different topic, and I wanted to know, because um, I heard from your flyers that you're against abatements, and I am really happy about that, but I also wanted to know what the team's outlook on um mixing different incomes in, in these new developments. Um, I think Bernie Sanders had actually, what's the word? He had organized with the developers and came to an agreement that they would mix the incomes that were in the development, so that it wasn't like all rich people, and I think that's a major divide in the city. Um, would you guys consider that?
So, so, once again, I apologize for answering all the questions, but they're really legal questions. So in New Jersey, there is the concept of affordable housing, and there are affordable housing set-asides that allow us to set aside a certain amount of a housing project for, for affordable housing. So, you can do that, what you can't do is say, you're gonna build an apartment, and we want to make sure that you have people from all income stratas in there, and you're, you're, that simply, it's simply not legal to do that. Once somebody builds, and they're able to sell to anybody, it would be discriminatory to say, well, I'll only sell that unit to people who make a certain amount of money. But what you can do, because there's the, you know, the whole Mount Laurel concept, which, as it applies to Long Branch, is a, is a, is a kind of a unique issue, you can have set-asides for affordable housing. The answer is yes.
Yeah, I was thinking, instead of having like, a separate development that the developers have agreed to um building, they have one building, and they agree that a certain percentage will be affordable housing.
So, so Anna, for example, with the lower Broadway, and, and Kevin, just because you're on the planning board, let me know, um, you know, there was a affordable housing component to that, you see, it's like a four-phased project, and the affordable housing component doesn't come in, or kick in, I should say, until the third or fourth phase of it. Personally, I would have liked to have seen an affordable housing com, component in the first phase. Um, I don't know to what, you know, to what extent, some people, a couple units, ten per, ten percent, I mean, Bill and I just had this conversation with, with, with a, a group earlier in the week, I don't really know what the situation is with the current development agreement, if we can change that, it's something we'd certainly like to look at.
Okay. Um, another topic I was gonna ask is-
Your time is up.
Oh, okay, is that right?
Thank you. Anyone else? I need a motion to close the public participation portion of this meeting, so move. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We can take the listed resolutions as a consent agenda, um, but I think we have to remove uh R-161-18 to another time, right? We discussed that earlier.
Uh, correct, yes, that was at the request of Mr. Goodman earlier.
Right, so, uh, R-161-18 will be removed at this time, so I need to uh have a motion to take the remaining listed resolutions as a consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dangler?
Yes.
Doctor Vogt?
Yes.
Doctor Selly?
Yes.
Mrs. Wittes?
Yes. Um, next item is miscellaneous business for the good of the order, Councilman Dangler?
Uh, yes. I um have a couple things. One, I'd like for us, the, the board and administration, to look at the city ordinances in regards to um the board slash commissioners that we have, and to those ordinances that do not state it, that we state the board members or commissioners uh live in Long Branch in order to sit on those, um, to hold those positions. Since we did run on Long Branch first, I would like for us to have Long Branch residents represent the different boards and entities that we have here in Long Branch. Um, also, I want to just reen, reemphasize that uh with the development, as we move forward, certainly, we don't, what we can change, uh, we, obviously, we cannot change, but what we can change, I would like to just um make sure that we do consider, to answer the young lady, um, that we do consider affordable housing in all projects that go on uh here in Long Branch, because Long Branch is a melting pot, it's not a, a separate uh city, um, and as you can see by the room, whatever we have right here, so, um, I am, certainly would be in support of that. And lastly, the young lady who spoke uh earlier, I forgot your name, but uh, when we were on the board, when Rose and I were on the board earlier this year, uh, Governor, uh, we were all smiles, because we did receive the money already, I think it was about five-hundred thousand, five-hundred thousand dollars, and we were short, and we were gonna have to not cut jobs, because we don't do that here in Long Branch, but to, to make, you, you gotta double up on some of the, the duties, as teachers and so on. So, um, we did get our portion already, and that was put in the budget in March when it was announced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilwoman Pierre? Oh, I'm sorry, she's not here. Councilwoman Vogt?
Uh, so I want to pick up the, on the comments from two people, um, one, Marcia, is that, um, uh, your question about what the priorities are um for this administration, and it was alluded to by um another speaker also, um, if you, if you go to the website, you'll see the hundred-day plan that uh we just, just got posted in terms of what are the areas that we're, we want to focus on to start off with, it's, uh, you'll see, oh, it's probably about thirty different initiatives that are listed there that we want to get started on, and we will um very shortly be putting out a date for a town meeting, and at that town meeting, we'll be talking about some of those initiatives, and then it's our plan to periodically give you an update on those things too. It's a beginning list, we'll add, we'll keep you posted, but that'll give you an idea of what um, of what some of our priorities are, and certainly for additional input with that. Um, the second um people, the, two people, um, unfortunately, I just saw them leave, Mark and Roseanne Davis, uh, I wanted to also congratulate and thank them for the work that they do. Linda, maybe you can um tell them, just in terms of recognizing the importance of the community gardens, and also to thank Jake, uh Jake Jones for his support of that. Um, I think some of you may know that I, I work at Brookdale Community College, and uh that is one of the initiatives that is, we are now supporting because it's so important, students can't learn if they're hungry, you know, and so the whole idea of uh, at the college, we're starting a similar kind of effort, uh, and it's not that I'm promoting the college, I'm just using that to say, it is such a significant problem, so again, my, my thanks and congratulations to uh everybody who participates on that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Selly?
Tonight, as I sat here, I can't believe, first of all, the audience that's here, it's amazing, and I don't know if you know, I counted the speakers, and there were thirteen speakers, I don't know if that's good or bad with the number, but I want to tell you, it's been a long time since I've seen that many people get up and say what they wanted to say, and all I would say is, please, I'm going to encourage you to come back, if you have suggestions, if you have questions, please, don't be afraid to come up, because we're an open administration, and I encourage you, please, and I'd like to see you come back again. Thank you very much.
Mayor Plow, would you like to?
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming, as always, and um, I agree with everything Dr. Selly just said. Also, I want to point out, we still have the um city council office hours, where any resident or anyone can come and, and speak with the business administrator and two city council members, um, that's the first Wednesday of the month at six o'clock, just if you could give the uh, Ms. Schmelz, the clerk, a, a call in advance of that, what is it, forty-eight hours before at least, um, and so that's very good. And also, uh, just so you know, I mentioned at six o'clock, we now have a suggestion and comment box uh in the back there, so if anyone'd like to make any comments or suggestions, there's a form to fill out, and then we'll, we'll respond to you promptly, or certainly by the next meeting. So thank you all again.
And I'd like to also thank you all for coming, I apologize that you had to wait for us, um, we don't intend on doing that very often, and uh, thank you for all of your suggestions, and we certainly will take them under advisement, and we hope that you continue to come to the meetings and, you know, let us know your concerns, and please feel free to contact us at any time, our email addresses are on the website, and if you need our phone numbers, uh, call this clerk's office, and she will give you our number. Thank you so much for coming, I need a, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.